I'm Bill Berry.
Joe, we have Barry Sheckley, our other board member.
Hello Barry.
Hi Joel, how are you?
This is gonna be a lot of fun. Because we're trying to figure out, we're gonna make sure Barry that you can see me, and then I also have to pay attention to this camera over here, and these wonderful folks in the room. So I'm gonna do my best to sort of move around so that you all can see me. And I thank you all for the invitation to be here. Jessica Ritter, as you likely all know, is a shipping in Goodwin, and I've been doing some work with them. I've known her actually for a while, and participated on panels for them in my previous life when I was in corporate America, before I started my own firm. And the interesting thing that I want to share with you all is that I have been doing work in some way related to diversity, equity, and inclusion my entire career, sort of by accident. And at the time that I decided to start my own firm, I was the inaugural Chief Diversity Officer at the University of Connecticut, a place that you all might be familiar with. After having spent about a decade as the Chief Diversity Officer at Travelers Insurance. And so it really became an opportunity to partner with a number of organizations across all sectors to help navigate through these conversations around diversity. I had no idea, a year and a half ago, when I launched the firm, that we would be in the place in our society where we are now. And I almost feel like the timing could not have been better. On one hand, right, it's a good news, bad news story. We've seen some real challenging moments in the history of our nation. But at the same time, I'm optimistic and hopeful that the moment that we have to really engage in dialogue around some of these issues that have existed as the elephant in the room for such a long time, that we finally might be able to move beyond them. But the backdrop in our nation at this moment is one that presents a lot of challenge. So what I'm trying to do tonight is talk a little bit about where we are right now. And then expand and provide you all with some tools to think about how you then navigate through as a part of the leadership of this district, with the responsibility and accountability to support the administrators, the teachers, staff, as well as students to navigate through this. And also, your own individual opportunities, I think. And I firmly believe that each and every one of us, literally, has an opportunity in this moment to begin to create change. So let's see if we can make this work. Let me share it for you, Barry, first.
Question. How long do we plan on spending?
It's scheduled for an hour and a half. Almost predicted we might go a few hours.
Okay, I just wasn't sure, so thank you.
And to your point, if anybody has any questions all the way through, please feel free to stop me and ask at that point in time. So what, over the last, literally, three or four months, as we watched the country respond initially to the killing of George Floyd, we've begun to uncover what I consider to be America's Achilles heel. Now, I hope that no one in this room has ever had an Achilles injury. If you have, or you know someone who has, you probably know that it is one of the most debilitating pains that you can feel. But what happens is that all of us have an Achilles tendon, right? It's what allows us to walk and move. But how many of us think about it in the context of our day? Most of us don't. Those folks who have felt that injury, I guarantee you they do. Because at some point, they're thinking about, let me make sure I don't injure this again. But most of us have no idea of the importance of the Achilles tendon as it relates to our body. I think about racism in this country in the same way. Those who've been very much impacted, maybe felt the pain, they're acutely aware of it. The rest of us, we don't necessarily have any window into it. Particularly here in Connecticut, because we live in such racially and socio-economically stratified areas, we generally don't have a lot of visibility to people who are different from us.
Say that again, the people you described in Connecticut?
That we are racially and socio-economically stratified. So literally, this state, and quite frankly, I'm from New York, from Long Island specifically. And Long Island is very much the same. You literally know from community to community, and I could probably call out the names of towns to you all here in Connecticut, and you might say some adjectives that might describe that town. Because we make, you know, sort of these generalizations about towns, because it's easy to do so. Generally, you say a town, you know, you throw out a, I always say this, and it's always somebody who's like from there. I say Greenwich, right? Adjectives come to your mind immediately. I say Bridgeport. Certain adjectives come to your mind. You think you know who lives there, maybe their socioeconomic position, et cetera. And so as a result of that, our residential segregation, which it really is, doesn't allow us the ability to interact with people who are different than us in most instances. And so we go along until that moment when we injure our Achilles heel. And then we feel that pain, and we determine how we're going to move through it. For some, it's surgery; for others, maybe there's some opportunities for physical therapy. But ultimately, there's rehab. And for anyone who's been in any kind of rehab, you know, it's deliberate. It takes time. That, my friends, is where I see us in this nation as it relates to racism, as its Achilles heel. We all have the opportunity at this moment to decide, will we enter rehab? And at the end of that time, we expect to emerge at some point better off than we were, and certainly not in pain. And so this is why I think about racism in this way, and that's what's sort of squarely sitting in front of us today. So, oh, okay. It's quicker than I even thought. I didn't have to click it. So, the agenda for this evening, those are my opening remarks. And then, one of the things that I think is critically important is for us to establish some guidelines for our conversation. So we'll do that in just a bit. Then I do a couple of segments that will be, that will feel like some fact sharing, exploring our feelings. How do we feel about some of the things, not only that I've shared, but that we know that are happening around us? And then we'll close by thinking about ways in which each of us individually and collectively can begin to take action to move beyond. Okay. Now Barry, ignore it. The folks here can't see it because you're covering it. But it says one word in the chat. As I was saying to Jacqueline earlier, I'm so used to doing everything virtual. She emailed me and asked if I wanted any handouts. And I was like, handouts? I said, give me till 1:30, I'll let you know. I was like, no, I don't even know. Everything is on here. So pretend it doesn't say one word in the chat. But Barry, you should feel free to type into the chat. One word as to how you are feeling right now. So you've already gone around and said your name. So what I'd love for you to do, and it does not have to be in order, it can be popcorn style. Just one word that describes how you're feeling at this moment. Anybody?
Overwhelmed.
Overwhelmed.
Unprepared.
Unprepared.
Tired.
Tired.
Curious.
Curious?
Cautiously hopeful. That's two, sorry.
There's always one. Some of you will have an old sentence after you feel like.
Reflective.
Reflective.
I could say active and.
Eager?
Eager. I told you someone would have a sentence.
I didn't hear what she said.
Skeptical.
Skeptical. Also, you did bring it down one, okay. You could have had two or three. We were ready.
Let me use energetic.
Energetic?
Energetic. There you go, that's right.
Anyone else? Did I get everyone? All right, now I told Barry to type into the chat, but the problem is, can I see the chat?
I can, I can read his word if you want.
Hold on, oh, you got it? Okay, go ahead.
Anticipate.
Anticipate, okay, awesome. Thank you so much, Barry. I left the house where my five-year-old and my 11-year-old were fighting. No one listens and follows directions. Barry is my best friend right now. It just feels good, right? So let's, I think it went too far for me. Okay, nope. So, I talked about group guidelines. So I'm not going to read all of these to you, but what I will attempt to do is to move the...
Oops.
Okay.
Let me minimize this for you and get this out of the way.
Yes.
Oh, it's a ProWise. You can touch it.
That's, that's.
It's the bottom left, bottom left.
Thank you. Yep, thank you very much, Kate.
You're making me nervous.
I know.
One more. There you go.
All right, okay. So, thank you all for being flexible. I'm not gonna read all of these to you because I'm confident that you can see them. If anyone can't, I'm happy to read them. But essentially, these are guidelines that you should feel free to, in other settings, utilize as you begin to create space for conversation in any scenario. Some of these things might be very intuitive. There are two that I'm gonna highlight for you that might not be so familiar. One of them is make space, take space. What that means is that, in many instances, there are some of us who feel much more comfortable speaking up. And we tend to have something to say and contribute without a lot of hesitation. What I'm asking those of you who are in that category to think about making some space for some of the folks who might be less likely to sort of jump in right away. Those folks, I'd encourage you to take space. So use this opportunity to share and engage and query and learn with your colleagues. Now, that does not mean to those folks who I said to make space for others. I did a session a couple of weeks ago, and we were on Zoom, and we broke into the breakout groups, and there was one person still in the main room with me. And I said, you know, hi, is, you know, can I help you? Are you, you know, trying to figure out how to make it happen? And she was like, no, you told me to make space. So I figured, you know, I don't know if I can participate if I'm in it. So I'm just gonna stay out here. I said, that's not what I meant. I do want you to participate. So I do want the folks to know that if you are those people, that does not mean you get to disengage from the room. Just means you wanna help your colleagues to be involved.
I like that.
Yeah, I was like, oh, no, that's not what I meant. The second one that I'll amplify is use I statements, or make I statements. The reason I say that is that oftentimes, particularly in communities like this, and I said I grew up in, I'm from New York, I grew up in Malvern. I don't know if anyone's ever heard of it. It's a small, probably like working middle-class district in Nassau County. And so it reminds me sort of of the collegiality here. One of my classmates' father was on the school board, so we were very sort of intimately connected. And because you've been in a town for a while, you think you know about the town, right? So sometimes we'll say like, well, you know, we do, or well, in this town, and he's fine, we don't, what have you. I'm gonna ask you to resist that and own your experiences. What have you seen? What have you experienced? What have you felt? So using I statements as we go through tonight. Are there other guidelines that are not listed here that you feel would be helpful to us as we navigate through this conversation? Anything that you don't see listed on the screen? Or anything you'd like clarification?
It looks good.
Awesome. So if you all could give me a thumbs up, nod your head, let me know that you think you can accommodate these guidelines, that would be awesome. Excellent, thank you. All right, let's try not to go through the whole entire presentation at one time. All right, so I promised that we were gonna start off talking about facts. And one of the most challenging things, I think, in the context of our society today, is identifying what really are the facts. We have access to, and I remind my children all the time, that when I was their age, we did not have the internet. There was no place to go other than to sit and scroll, and flip through the world book encyclopedias, all 26 or 28 books, to find the answer to what you wanted. Today, it's as simple as a click. And quite frankly, you can get it in three seconds. But the challenge is that, as easy as it is to share information, it's also easy for any of us to put our own information out there. Our opinions, our thoughts, our feelings. That may not necessarily be facts. So it's challenging because we hear so much coming at us. 24-hour news cycle, social media. You hear so many things, but what is really the fact? And one of the biggest things that I think has been challenging this time is the notion of what is racism? Now, we've talked about it, you've probably heard that word. I mean, if there was a contest for the word that was said the most in the last five months, I'm confident that racism would win. But how many of us even know what it is? Now, I'm gonna share with you, for the purpose of this conversation tonight, a definition around systemic racism. But I'm also going to show you a video that talks about the social constructs of race. It's the core of the word racism. So what is race? And how did we even get to a place where we've got a construct that there is now an entire structure around it? So first, the definition. So the one in the blue on the bottom left is the quick and easy version. Institutional racism is a system of privilege and power based on socially constructed categories. And then I gave you like a little bit more. And the sources are there, and you all will have the presentation to refer to. But essentially, for the purpose of tonight, what we are looking at is institutional racism. Now, I would argue that most folks, if asked to define racism, would probably think about personal interactions. Individuals who might do something, say something, show something that would demonstrate that they were against one race or another, right? That's what most of us think of. So when we think, the whole notion of institutional racism or systemic racism, is sometimes hard to jump to. Like, what do you mean by that? You know, when I think of racism, I think of a person who does something to harm someone or to prevent or provide a barrier. But what does it really mean when you're talking about institutional? Well, this definition sort of breaks it down a little bit. The ways in which practices and policies that exist within the context of our society create different outcomes for people from different groups, right? So there's, you know, to be fair, there's racism, sexism, you know, all types of different isms, right? Because depending upon the group that is disadvantaged based upon a policy or practice, that's how the system, so to speak, is created. So as this says, the institutional policies may never mention race, but their effect is to create advantages typically for the dominant group in society, which in most instances in the United States are individuals who identify as white. And to disadvantage individuals who do not fall into the majority position. And so if we weren't just talking about race, that could be if there were more women than men, if there were more men than women, if there are more, you know, individuals over the age of 40 than less, right? So think about how you might fit it into any scenario. A couple of examples. So government policies that explicitly restricted the ability of people to get loans or improve their homes in neighborhoods with high concentrations of African-Americans. That's also known as redlining, right? Now, in that policy that was written, it never specifically indicated who was the target, but a policy like that simply created what we know today as systemic racism. There's a great book called The Color of Law that breaks down this whole scenario and talks about, you know, my beloved Long Island, as well as the West Coast, the Pacific area around San Francisco, where after the war, there were housing developments that were built. But specifically in the articulation of the building, there were not opportunities for African-Americans to move in. Levittown is what I'm referring to on Long Island. Now, there were veterans who were coming back who were African-American, right? Just as there were veterans who were coming back from the war who were white. And they both were given the same benefit to be able to use towards a home. But if you could not get a mortgage, then you couldn't use the benefit. So it didn't on its face appear to be discriminatory because everyone got the benefit. But, you know, I don't know, shucks. Guess you just didn't qualify for the mortgage, right? So that's how sort of institutional racism has been structured, yes.
When you say the benefit, the benefit you mean means a VA mortgage.
Correct.
You're saying people who are not allowed to apply for a VA? You can apply.
They could apply, but they would not, they would not actually be successful. So, yeah, and it's a, it's a great book. It really breaks it down. Because quite frankly, housing is what's created our neighborhoods, our towns and cities. And as we know, in Connecticut, those town and city boundaries are what create our education boundaries and so on and so forth. So that's just one example to give you an idea of what we mean by institutionalized racism. Now, I want you to take a look at this video, which breaks down for you how we even got race to begin with. So I'm going to see if this link works. If not, I have it already open. Maybe it will. Yeah, why not? Sure.
Are you gonna send us all of the links in this?
Yep. All right, I already have it open, okay. Well, that means they're probably gonna show the ad again. And I have it queued up, so let me.
You may think you know exactly what race you are, but how would you prove it if someone disagreed with you? The fact is, even though race drives a lot of social and political health matters, race isn't real.
Wanted you to be able to see it.
One of the first people to attempt to categorize humans as race was a German scientist around 1776. He came up with five different groups that were invisible in the Earth and geographic relationships.
I'm trying to make it louder because people hear it.
Some historians have said the idea that there were different races helped them resolve the contradiction between the natural race or the fact of slavery. That whites were their own distinct category, and they could feel a lot better about the rights of people who were labeled black and decided were fundamentally different. But as political priorities changed, definitions of race were very badly adjusted right along the way. For example, if you are Mexican, Breton, or Ancestry of the United States in 1999, you were considered white. Then, the 1930 census changed that to non-white until immigration. Later, when the US needed an increase in labor force during World War II, these people were switched back to white. And what it took to be black once varied so wildly throughout the century, from one quarter to 2016, to the infamous one drop of African ancestry, that people could actually change races just by crossing state lines. Then suddenly, in 2000, the government decided that Americans could be more than one race and added a multiracial category to the census. This has left many Americans scratching their heads when it comes to selecting who they are. As many as 6.2% of census respondents selected some other race in this 2010 survey. The idea that someone might look one way and identify another way, or that they might be really hard to place in the racial category is not new. This is why there was a public debate about whether MSNBC's parents may be associated with black or how we can't even agree on the racial label assigned to the President of the United States. Of course, many... Of course, many people feel their racial identity is very clear and very permanent. But the fact that some people have changed theirs and that no one can really argue with them shows how shaky the very idea of race is. This is all because there isn't a race chromosome in our DNA that people can fight to. It simply doesn't exist. When the medical community links race to health outcomes, it's really just using race as a subset of your own family. This is where your ancestors came from, or the experiences of people who may have been from the same racial group as you. Dorothy Roberts explains that sickle cell anemia is a prime example of this. The disease is linked to areas with high rates of malaria, which include some parts of the Earth, Asia, in addition to Africa. It's not actually about race at all. This, of course, does not mean that the concept of race is hugely important in our lives. The racial categories to which we're assigned can determine real-life experiences. They can drive flip-out, and so they can even make a difference between lives and death. But understanding that racial categories are made up can give us an important perspective on where racism came from and the source of race.
I like to show this because it's a quick and easy way to say like, wait a minute.
Attention families with a loved one in nursing.
Always.
If your loved one has suffered from COVID.
Okay. So it always sort of brings for folks, like, what? I've never heard this before. What are some of your reactions? Is this the first time you've heard something like this, or seen this, or you kinda knew? What's some of your reactions?
Understand the truth.
Yeah. I was familiar with race being a social construct, but the concern around like sickle cell anemia is something that I hadn't thought of before. And, you know, I had previously, like, understood that it more affected people of color, but now understanding that that was a...
Yes.
I think with the unbroken census stuff that I've been more exposed to, that's kind of interesting to talk about the census. Access to different communities and to the federal problem. That's just, that's not a thing in my head, especially with the 2000 census changing. Would that's the change?
Absolutely, absolutely. So the two or more racist category, for someone who does work like I do, at that time, when it happened, we were like, okay, so what do we do? Because they don't capture which races you are. So now you become this nebulous kind of, and it also sort of diminishes the counts in the other categories, right? So yes, affirmatively, you know, identify who you are, but now you're not in any count. And that does have implications around, you know, availability of benefits and things of that nature. So I should have asked you this when I came in, but I'm just curious. How would you all identify me? What race would you say that I am? You're right.
I would say mixed.
You would say mixed, okay.
Actually, I was looking at your eyes and so forth, actually, maybe.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody else? So let me tell you a funny story about that. So I, as I mentioned, started my firm about a year and a half ago. And one of the things that, you know, folks would suggest is, hey, you should register as a woman-owned business, a minority-owned business. You know, there are a lot of opportunities. It'll be great. So I decided to go down the route of the minority-owned business first in the state of Connecticut. And so I get all of my financials together, everything. And that was challenging, you know, for being a first-time entrepreneur. So I felt like, ooh, finally got that done. And in the checklist, they have, you also need to provide documentation that proves that you are, in fact, a minority. And I was like, oh. And they listed things, like birth certificate, passport, you know. So I'm looking at all those things, and I'm like, driver's license doesn't have race on it. My passport doesn't have race on it. Neither does my birth certificate. So I'm looking at my kid's birth certificate. So it tells you where I was born on my children's birth certificate, but it doesn't tell you what race I am. So now I'm stumped. What am I supposed to send to these people? Ah, ancestry.com. I did that. I must be able to PDF that data and send it to them. It proves that I'm a descendant of the countries here, you know, what have you. I mean, it might prove that I'm a descendant of some other places too, so who knows, right? They said, nope, not good enough. They said, do you have any proof of your lineage? So I think, well, again, in ancestry.com, they have, if anyone is familiar, they have links to documents that help to assert your family members. And so they had the 1910 census. My grandmother, my maternal grandma was born in 1908, and it listed her, she was born in Georgia. It listed her as being, at the time, Negro, right? So I was like, oh, good, I'm good to go. Send that in, they're like, nope. So now I'm like, okay. So yes, I am African-American. And the whole mixed part is interesting, and I'll tell you. My great-great-grandfather was actually a Confederate soldier in South Carolina. So, yeah, that's deep, right? I think, I feel like sometimes, like, he's probably like turning over in his grave, like, and she was going around talking about race all the time. It is what it is. That's where I got this wonderful pigmentation from, down the generations. But in any case, so I'm like, what am I supposed to do now? Like, what do I do? And they're like, well, you could always get an affidavit where I could ask you to write on a piece of paper that I'm African-American and get someone to notarize it, and that would be good enough.
Oh my.
Isn't that as crazy as just the whole notion of the social construct? So I slipped my...
So wait, they didn't take your ancestry DNA, but they'll take a signed affidavit from someone who doesn't know you.
You, any of you. And that is what gave me pause. And I was like, you've gotta be kidding me. But it only adds support to this video that we've seen, right? I have lived my entire life identifying as black, as African-American, right? I know that I have a great-great-grandfather who's white, right? I get it, we're from South Carolina, that's where the slaves abroad. Like, we all understand what happened in slavery and stuff like that, like, we get it. And after. And after, um, the action, the story is my great-grandmother posed as a nurse. My great-great-grandfather was a doctor. So they stayed in the same home, but they weren't really, you know, allowed legally to be, but that's, so that's the story. But anyway, point being, I can't even prove that I'm black. Right? But most of you looked at me immediately and were like, oh, she's black, right? Anybody outside is like, oh, she's black. But I can't prove enough so that my firm would be designated as a minority, um, owned business. Perfect example of how nebulous this whole conversation is, particularly when you think about policies that have been created based upon these socially constructed categories that have impacted, in some ways, there are some ways, to be fair, that have been positive, but in the lion's share of examples, negatively impacted individuals in the context of this nation. And so that is what really, that whole notion is what really drives me to do this work. Let me just go back to, I think I have to stop this one and put the PowerPoint back. So this is why I think it's really important, as we in this country talk about this issue, to really understand what we're talking about. So these are headlines from the news closer to the June-July timeframe. Um, to my immediate right, the headline, Ahmad Arbor was hit with a truck before he died, and his killer allegedly used a racial slur. Um, just below that are the names of some, but not all exhaustive, um, black men and women who have been killed, um, unarmed individuals who've been killed, not necessarily by law enforcement, but also by vigilante citizens as well. Um, in the middle, you see a photo from a rally. I can't read the refrain that we heard, not only more recently from George Floyd, but several years ago from Eric Garner as well. Um, just above that, um, if you've been watching the news, just yesterday, yesterday, I think it was, um, a judge in Louisville awarded the family of Breonna Taylor an civil suit of twelve million dollars um, because of the, because of her killing in her home and because of the no-knock warrant. Um, the bottom, the bottom is the headline, four officers fired after video shows officer kneeling on neck of man who later died in Minneapolis. And then the top left, it talks about Black Lives Matter. Now, that has by far and away become the biggest area of consternation in our country. Primarily because, in most instances, the average person who is refraining Black Lives Matter is really not talking about the organization. They're really talking about themselves, their friends, the people they know. My life matters. Black Lives Matter. But what it's gotten caught up in, and this is actually the mission statement purposely that I pulled from the Black Lives Matter website, that articulates why it was founded in twenty thirteen after George Zimmerman was acquitted in Trayvon Martin's murder, and then talks about, it's a global organization, the US, UK, and Canada, whose mission is to eradicate white supremacy and build local powers intervening in violence inflicted on black communities by the state vigilante. The refrain, however, is a little bit different than this and a lot more simple. And that's where we seem to get caught up. But this is really what thrusts the issue of race into our national awareness. Now, since then, however, and you may wonder, how did we actually get here? We've begun to uncover racism in other places, across our businesses, certainly within the context of the workplace, in healthcare, in housing, you name it. And so what I did here is I pulled some clips. If you type in diversity in news or racism in news into Google, you can find a treasure trove. So here's a few that kind of stood out. For black applicants, the hiring market hasn't changed much in twenty-five years. There's been research that's been done over time that using two different names, a name that is a more traditional sounding name against a more ethnically sounding name on a resume. All education, experiences, everything else held the same. Nine times out of ten, hiring managers will hire the candidate who has the more traditional sounding name. I always joke that my daughter, whose name is Kendall Hayes, you don't know whether she's a male or a female, you don't know whether she's black, white, Asian, Latino. Kendall Hayes is that name. She probably would have gotten hired. Had her name been Tanika Johnson, she probably would not have been hired. And that same research has been done over and over again, and the result has not changed, right? So we have some deep-seated biases, I think, that play out, particularly when we're making decisions, right? So that's one of, one of the, the takeaways for all of you as you think about the work you do. The one just below that, Google falsed for racial bias in image search results for black teenagers. So maybe you, like me, are doing a presentation. You want to be able to represent maybe something for the high school. You want to represent some photos of teenagers and be diverse in their image representation. You type in black teenagers, what do you get? Well, what you get, you all probably can't see, is in the top portion of the images, they are all mugshots of young black males, not the photos on the bottom, which are teenagers hanging out with friends, playing sports, pre-COVID, of course, no one has on a mask. Why is that, right? Now supposedly, Google has corrected that, though I did this presentation maybe a month ago, and someone Googled it right then and there, and they're like, it still comes up, right? So there's still some work to be done. Again, we are a society who is relying on what we can find on the internet. So if the internet says it, it must be true, right? So we've got to think about how that happens. The one in the middle, Colorado voters will get a second chance next month to abolish slavery. But Colorado, right, a state within the United States. Now, this article is from twenty eighteen, but what I will tell you is that because we know there are many, many laws that are states' rights, Colorado and Mississippi was the last state before them in twenty thirteen, was indeed the last state to officially abolish slavery. There, in fact, was still a law on the books that allowed for an individual to hold slaves in Colorado in twenty eighteen. Below that is Al Roker defends dressing as white character for Halloween. Interestingly enough, a couple of years ago, and those of you who might be seventies babies and eighties kids like I remember Back to the Future, and Al Roker dressed as the professor from Back to the Future. Everybody knew that's who he was. He had, they had a DeLorean model near him, and those of you who might be Back to the Future fans. But apparently, there was backlash because they said he had no right to dress as a white character. Interestingly, however, that there is indeed a history of blackface in this country, where regularly, white performers and actors would literally put black paint on their faces and portray characters that essentially dehumanize or, you know, a representation, an extreme characterization of African-Americans. Now, we have seen, strangely enough, a resurgence of blackface in the last couple of years in this country, and even here in Connecticut, um, which I actually think is not too far from here. There was a high school where a student came to a football game and blackface. And then there was a student who posted on social media in another town outside of Hartford. But when I've asked some of the younger people, do they even understand what it means? They don't, right? Because, to be realistic, we don't really teach about those elements of American history in our classroom. So not that they get a pass because they weren't taught it, but when you stop and think about it for a minute, you're like, well, would they really know? Again, the importance of the facts and making sure that we understand the history so that we don't continue to perpetuate it. So we have, over the last four months, not just responded to, um, racism as it has impacted us from a law enforcement or, you know, violence perspective, but we've begun to look at the institutions that are so much a core of our society and really think, like, where does this play out here? So I always want to make sure we make that trip because folks, I think, in my opinion, have gotten real stuck in the black lives, blue lives, you know, people are like, no, you know, I think even in the language, and I'm definitely, uh, communications, language, words matter, right? Um, I think some of the things that have, and this is totally my opinion, I think some of the things that have been put out there only cause us to be more polarized as a nation. Instead of, we don't have many opportunities to come together and really talk about what it is that we mean, what we're seeing, what we need to articulate, what things need to be changed. And so it's not just about that, right? I can't speak to having lost a family member, but I do know someone very closely who's related to the gentleman who was shot in the back seven times, right? So this hits close to home, but I've more so been able to connect to a lot of these workplace issues because certainly in my twenty-five-plus-year career, I've seen this over and over and over again. So how do we begin to, um, you know, really have conversations about this? Now, because we're in a school, I wanted to share with you some demographics, and this is why I do promise you will have these slides. Uh, so this is just US public education. So I'm gonna walk over here for a minute just to show you the percentage distribution of students in public elementary and secondary schools. The darker bar is, um, two thousand, fall two thousand. And the, the bar all the way to the right is the projection for fall twenty twenty-nine. What you see all the way on your left is the white student population significantly dropping from sixty-one percent projection for twenty twenty-nine to forty-four percent. Um, the black population is, is generally flat from two thousand seventeen percent, twenty twenty-nine projection fifteen percent, right? The Hispanic population, twenty, two thousand sixteen percent up to twenty twenty-nine up to twenty-eight percent, right? So increasing. And the other groups in terms of the Asian population, Pacific Islander, Native American, relatively flat, two or more races, again, it's a hard category to figure out, relatively flat. So just wanted to give you some context in the context, you know, the context of the school setting. Now I'm gonna show you the teachers. Online. Now I'm gonna show you the distribution of public education students by demographic. So what this, this chart does, and you'll probably want to tear into this a little bit, is it's showing in the shaded areas with the, the stripes on diagonal, um, students who attend a school that is seventy-five percent or more minority. So if you look at, this is the category of black students, this is the category of Hispanic students. More than half of black students and Hispanic students attend schools with seventy-five percent minority enrollment. So they are going to schools with kids who are just like them. So you'll remember back to the comment I made about our residential segregation and why we don't have opportunity to talk or learn about people across different racial backgrounds because arguably, more than, and it's actually fifty-eight percent and sixty percent of black and Hispanic students are going to schools with seventy-five percent or more black or Hispanic students. Almost fifty percent of white students go to schools that have less than twenty-five percent minority enrollment. So again, how do we then present a, a society that allows people to learn about people who are different from them? So I like to share this one because I think it does put into perspective when we think about what opportunities we might have intra-district, across-district, to begin to break down some of these barriers. Now I'm gonna show you the teachers. And this is really particularly interesting to me because I do know, so look how different the chart looks, right? What you see all the way on the left are the percentage of white teachers. The first bar is the ninety-nine-two thousand school year, and the second bar is the twenty seventeen-twenty eighteen school year. We're still talking about close to eighty percent of all teachers in US public education are white. Now, you saw that the demographics are increasing in terms of the black and Hispanic students, but what you're seeing clearly right now is that an overwhelming majority of the teachers are white. Um, eight percent black teachers in ninety-nine-two thousand decreased to seven percent black teachers in, um, twenty seventeen-twenty eighteen. Hispanic has gone up slightly, six percent to nine percent. Asian, Pacific Islander, um, Native American, two or more races, pretty negligible, right? So who's standing in front of the classroom? Not just for students of color, but for all students. Where do you learn that individuals who look differently from you have the capability to teach you, to provide you with knowledge, to provide you with information? There's a, um, a speaker who talks a lot about the fact that he's a white male, but he went to, because his parents were faculty at an HBCU, he went to a daycare where all of the teachers were African-American. And so he is cognizant of the fact that some of the earliest things that he learned in his life were from people who are African-American. So he recognized that he did not grow up thinking, well, these people couldn't know anything, right? But if you've never been exposed to people who are different, and everything that the media has told you about people, like your Google search, is that they are not capable of being in positions to lead or teach or what have you, you subconsciously are living with a notion that does actually play out and rears our head in our decision-making, right? In our school settings, in our lives, in our society. So just another point as we think about this in the context of education.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do you have, like, the causation of this? So I don't know if you have facts or just kind of thoughts in your own, is it that, that we're not getting opportunity, or is that there's not enough teachers coming from, coming to your school? And what, why does, why does it look like that?
Yeah.
And what can we do to make a difference?
Yeah, one of the things, I, I'm really good friends with someone who does not this research specifically, but does this research. And one of, one of the things that I was not aware of is the low percentage of the passing rate for the practice exam for African-Americans to take the exam. Um, I, I want to say that he had shared that there was something like, um, you know, the average African-American teacher candidate takes the practice twice, um, you know, before passing. And there's, I mean, the, the failure rate is like astronomical, right? So it's one of those things that begs the question of, like, you know, we've talked about the fact that the SAT clearly has some bias, right? Have we ever looked at the practice around that same point? And, you know, folks in education, you all could certainly tell me better, say that the practice is really like the SAT for teaching. Um, so there are some things that I think, you know, we probably should dig into further to help inform, you know, some of those questions. I'll say as a parent, where my daughter is a senior this year at East Hartford High School, East Hartford is probably one of the most racially balanced districts in the state. It's literally about thirty percent white, thirty percent black, thirty percent Hispanic. Um, my daughter has not had an African-American teacher her entire high school career. Um, and I'm like, that's problematic. Not just for her, but for her classmates, right? She does have me.
No, it's not.
Yeah, she does. But I think, you know, I think. I just, well, yeah, I mean, to a certain extent, because I think, you know, things are different now. When I grew up, you know, all the kids hung out at my house, black, white, you know, you, well, and I, and really in, in Maryland, it was black and white. Everyone hung out at our house. And if I had my, uh, my white classmates here today, they would tell you that their reality and mine, when I think about, we spent Christmas mornings with, uh, my friend Chris Sarrenson, who was one of six children in this big Irish Catholic family, and they always invited me and my grandmother and my mother over for Christmas breakfast, right? So for me and for them, the kinds of things they were exposed to, aware of early on, that changed who they were or set them up as adults to being much more aware of people different than them, right? So yes, I think in that scenario, though today, you know, COVID notwithstanding, my daughter doesn't really invite people over the way we did. It's just different. So I don't know that I really have the ability to influence as many kids, for example, as we had at my house. My mother was like, everyone can hang out here because that's safer, right? We hung out in the den all the time. But my daughter doesn't do that. So I do, to your point, I think if, you know, maybe if community was a little more like what it once was, but that, I don't know that they're really benefiting from that, you know?
Well, this speaks to, to, you know, our, our efforts in minority recruitment, you know, for teaching.
It's impossible.
There, yeah, and the, the numbers aren't there to, to try and find people. We're lucky, you know, to find, you know, have some individuals that are African-American, but they're very few.
And then, you know, what is the environment like that then they come to find? You know, we all think that we're really good people, but do we create an environment that is welcoming for folks who may not have come from a background like mine? Um, you know, that, that's a question for us to be thinking about. The other piece too is, you know, and this is, this is an indictment, I think, on our society as a whole. We don't value educators in the way that we do other professions. So, you know, why don't we have, um, efforts to, and this is something I've suggested to, um, our superintendent, is when do we say to the high school students who we really see have promise as teachers? When do we say to them, hey, let me start putting you, you know, I support an organization that looks to increase the population of people of color in the legal profession. We have a summer internship program for college students. You could be a freshman, sophomore, about law. Now, you've got to go to law school first, right? In the teacher profession, we don't even have that long to wait. So where is that same kind of initiative and energy around encouraging young people to begin to think about what it would be like to. to begin to think about what it would be like to-
Are you talking to high school or college apprentices?
Even high school. I mean, when do we start talking to them? You know, in the legal profession, they talk to students in high school about careers in the law.
I think we have the young educators, like, don't we, at high school?
We, you know, we have young educators across the, the district, yep.
Right, so at least that's in place. And I'm just wondering about the university and teachers colleges. Are they doing, have you looked into that at all, or is that kind of-
Yeah, I don't, you know, I haven't specifically, having been at UConn. I know that the NEAGs school obviously produces most of the teachers in Connecticut. Um, and they have a very contentious, um, minority student, student, minority teacher program. Um, but that's not enough for the full, you know, and again, to the practice piece, which I haven't done a whole lot of research into, um, you know, that's a real barrier. If that's a, if that's a challenge, there are folks out there who want to be teachers and yet they don't perceive that, they see that as a barrier. Um, they choose and opt for another career, you know, as opposed to doing that, so.
So can you, can you give some thoughts, so what in our school districts were worse than that? Okay? Um, I don't know if those numbers were right, but if it's ninety seven percent white-
Pretty much.
Something like that.
Yeah, pretty much.
Give a take.
Very much.
So what are some things that we could do from a teacher perspective to attract teachers? Cause there is competitive, I guess, if you're thinking and you need to, so how, how do we change that? What, what are some actions that we could do in our recruiting, uh, in our, I don't know if we have trouble with attention, but for retention perspective, like what can we do to make a difference?
Yeah, so of course I have some perspective, but if any good teacher, I'm gonna throw it right back at you. So what do you all think can be done differently as it relates to? So, you know, yes, I can, I can give you some suggestions, right? But I'm curious as to, you know, to your point, you know, do we know if it's a retention issue? Do we know if there has been a history? Do we know what our recruitment efforts are like? Are there enough resources to do the recruitment, right? For example, um, what, what are, what are your thoughts?
I guess the question, are there any programs, are there any programs in regards to student loans? Where you work as a teacher for ten years?
I, I, I never heard of that, yeah. I mean, that's, that's literally what I do for, for-
I think that's a win-win. I can teach for ten years to get a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a student loan. And I don't think that's broadcast, that, I mean, I didn't see, I didn't know anything about it until I went diving for it for my daughter.
I mean, my, my two cents on that is we can't rely on an external teaching tool because even those numbers up there, those are national numbers. It's even more pronounced in Connecticut than even the most recent one I have, that's like, maybe ten, I'm getting reviled in Connecticut, so I think it's like eight to ten percent of certified teachers identifying people of color. So we can't rely on an external teaching tool, uh, just to think that we're going to attract a more diverse teaching staff. I mean, I think like, at least what my network has done is we created our own, we partnered with a graduate program. We created our own internal pipeline where we essentially, like, have folks come to be residents with us, be subsidized, part of their tuition, and then there's a commitment that they have long-term in the network. So I think that's, yes, getting, um, getting, you know, folks in the door, but then there's also the inclusion piece.
Yeah, the other thing, the other thing I would add to your point is the notion of cohorts. So what happens oftentimes in those kind of scenarios is you bring the one person and they feel so isolated that they're like, no, I'm out of here. Like, I'll, I'll comply with whatever they've suggested, but I'm out of here as soon as I can be. So, you know, one of the things that I would apply from my corporate experience at Travelers is that, you know, corporations are all sort of clamoring for the same talent. And what was happening as we began to target partnerships with either historically black colleges or Hispanic-serving institutions, is you would find the same companies sort of in the mix. And so, you know, to use marketing terms, there's so much noise that students are never gonna be able to find you if you're not the biggest and the loudest. So if you're Travelers, you're not Disney, you're not, um, Mastercard, you're not these household names. So you've gotta work harder. How much money do you have to spend at Howard University versus how much money could you spend at Oregon State University? A phenomenal HBCU, but not the one that everybody's going to. So, you know, we, I know that in Connecticut, um, there are a ton of students that go to Oregon State, that go to Virginia State. There are some universities that for whatever reason, alumni and so on and so forth, it's like a, there's like a funnel, right? Um, so how do we make connections there, right? Instead of the places where everybody's going and, um, you know, we're like, you know, we're sitting over there like, okay, we only have this much resource to attract people, but the other folks are loud. How do we develop those relationships that might be more sustainable and that you can build and grow and that sort of thing? That's one of the suggestions that I would have, but I'm sorry, you were in one.
Well, I'm, I'm just wondering what careers are people of color perhaps choosing? If there's a pipeline for where they might be going or something that we could kind of lure them from that area?
Well, I, I think part of the challenge is the cost of college. And that's an issue for everyone across the board. And I'm sure that, you know, to teacher, entrance to teacher numbers are probably lagging on broadly. But I think that what happens is when you are faced by, you know, and this takes you all the way back to the sort of systemic racism piece, right? Generally, there's not generational wealth coming down from real estate and other things. If you didn't have access to property in the nineteen fifties, you don't have a house that's been in your family for three generations, right? So when you go to college, you're more than likely taking out a, a larger percentage of loans um, to, to fund your college experience. Um, and then you come out and it blows my mind today what students are coming out of college with loans, period. Um, but how do you begin? If you start with a hundred thousand dollars in student loans, right? Everyone told you like, this is what you have to do. And your families are like, listen, you have to get a job that's gonna allow you to help pay that back and sustain yourself, right? Like, I get, you know, we helped you get there, but now you gotta look forward. So, you know, I mean, I think for myself, and this is dating myself, because clearly I was in high school thirty plus years ago. But it was like, you could be a lawyer or a doctor and engineer. Like, that's what you should be, a lawyer, doctor, engineer. No one said, Joel, you love school, you should be a teacher. No one, said no one, right? So I think, you know, I mean, and so that's what it was. I was like, oh, okay, I'm gonna go to law school. And I ultimately did go to law school, but that's what was in my head. It wasn't, and all of the things that I know about now, that, you know, potentially career-wise, if I could do it all over again, it would be a whole different story. But those were none of the things that I was positioned for. People said, you've gotta go so that when you finish college, you have a job that's lucrative enough, to allow you to pay back your student loans.
I'm hearing you say two things. I'm hearing you say that perhaps we're not grooming our people of color, students of color, children to think about being career educators. And also the tuition would be too big of a barrier. So, uh, when, um, two of my kids went to school in the South. One went to UNC Chapel Hill, another one went to University of Georgia, where both of those had in-school tuition free for in-state kids who qualified. And my daughter had suite mates who were people of color. And, you know, once now, I think, a lawyer and then was a doctor, but did not choose education, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do, I don't think there's a one thing, I think that they're both and. And I do very strongly think that we don't necessarily encourage young people, maybe across the board, to think about education as a career. We don't, not in the same way that, you know, there's emphasis on STEM and it's, and we all believe in it, that's great. But no one's ever talking about, you know, you should really be an educator. Where's that campaign? Um, and I was in insurance, it was like, no one tells people they can be an actuary. What is an actuary? And it was literally campaigns developed to help high school students learn to understand what it meant to be an actuary. But I don't hear that, right? And, and from a national perspective, we're not saying, this is a valuable profession. This is a valuable commodity. We want you to really think about what this means. So that's not the, you know, it's not one thing, I think there are multiple, yep.
Well, I don't know if some of it is the fact that all of the school shootings and everything that we're expecting of teachers with common core and how people are being so rude and mean to teachers and they're feeling undervalued. So why would I wanna take a job where I'm being undervalued and I'm being, you know, unappreciated? And there's a risk of me being shot at school.
Well, that's true. I mean, but you know what? We could be shot.
No, I know we can be shot anywhere. No, but do, but do you know what I'm saying that-
The kids that I try to encourage to go into education, they, they look around the room and they look at the classmates that I'm dealing with and they're like,
I don't want this.
I couldn't put up with those kids, Mr. Derry. I couldn't do what you do.
Well, but that's what I'm saying, some of it might just be disenfranchised.
I think it's a matter of they equate happiness and success with a certain sum of money that doesn't come from education. So we've got a society that pushes or, or is, is equating happiness and making it with some financial amount. And then we also have the reality of what goes on in the classroom every day. And the kids look around and they're like, I don't know that I can handle. So.
John, we wanna get something more.
Yeah.
I think we, sorry, I'm just messing with you. Um, I think we talked way too much hundred thousand, but sometimes in this quarter, but when it comes to actions, which is action is, and I've had a lot of experiences with HBCUs in my professional life, of at least my strategic partners, exactly what you said, of reaching out to two or three HBCUs that aren't the hower in the world, right? But we could form a strategic partnership with their education programs to do a funnel toward Southwestern Connecticut, who is talking about teacher recruitment and people like that. I think in terms of an action, I'd say that's amazing, and incredible suggestion. The other part of this conversation, as I mentioned earlier, is the residential segregation that occurs in Connecticut at a, a level that's beyond anything else, right? In terms of the lack of access to affordable housing in East Line and communities across the second congressional district. Probably in these residential areas. Um, and I think that that's a, I, so I went to school in Vernon, in Vernon. And we would bust folks in from Brooklyn to come to Vernon schools. And the, and I went to the idea cabinet, which is attached to East Hartford High School. Um, and that experience in terms of thirty percent African-American, thirty percent white, thirty percent Hispanic, I mean, it, it took a lot to get there. And I think our communities need to figure out ways to get that, whether it's more access to affordable housing. Um, or because there's an interesting area in Connecticut here, a couple of weeks ago, about planning itself. Um, and how planning itself, not like redlining in primary contexts or planning in private schools. So I think there's like larger conversations here too. There's the strategic HBCU outreach side, but then there's the, how do we look at social housing? And I'm like, I'm a thirty-year-old living in East Line. It's tough to live in East Line being a white man who has a, who has more privilege and opportunity than anybody should ever imagine, right? Um, but how could somebody who's an African-American, thirty-year-old, afford to survive in the context of purely black, you know what I mean? So I think that conversation is something that's worth driving into.
Yep, that's a cool, yep. And I even can, I can, okay.
So I'm right, I'm going and actually part of it. But I love what you just completed also as far as creating something in, having that component there. You stay and we help you pay, those types of things. But we also, there's so many different components, it's not a one fix. It, there's so many different things. And I even said this to Jeff because, um, we have a reputation. Small rural, um, areas that are predominantly white have a reputation, um, that I think that we have to fix in order for, um, educators of color in the cultures to feel like they want to be here. That they'll be welcomed, that they won't be alone in school here, right? And I know I would welcome, I think the majority of people in this room would welcome. But if they feel welcome, we won't be, not welcome. So I think that that's such a huge deterrent. And, and we also live in a community, um, that there has been an issue here in our community with someone that did work in our district. And, um, I think that there's a reputation there. So we have to implement, we have to fix, we have to show people and show our community indeed that we are in peace, that we are welcome. Um, perhaps we need a, we have a supportive chat. You know, I think that's a really great question. And I did not grow up in East Line. And I'm very honest about kind of how I, uh, I grew up, very diversified. Um, I fell in love with my husband, I fell in love with my town. I didn't even know that a town like this exists because I grew up in city. I grew up, or I was in the, I grew up in a, uh, education system that, uh, told me very well. And coming here, it's like a help, it's a help. And having the education system have is fantastic. But there are elements that we could include to share. Multicultural programs and, and teaching, um, within our curriculum that will echo upwards, where people will see, oh, they have this, they have that. Where someone of a person of color or a different culture would want to be. So I'd like to see those things, I'd like.
Yeah, you, you hit the nail on the head too with curriculum. Because I think that, you know, when we talk about how we integrate curriculum, you know, it's not just about black history loans or Hispanic heritage. Not, it's about there are individuals who have contributed to all sorts of things that in your science curriculum, your, your, um, contemporary issues curriculum, your English curriculum can be reflective of different voices, right? Such that students then come out with an education that provides them with some kind of access to the fact that voices that are relevant and that matter are not only ones that look like that, right? Um, so that's, that's a critical component as well. And to answer your question about, you know, so what do we do, um, and this part of the town piece? So, like, thank you for the amazing transition. Um, the somewhat of the data part is that we know that, um, students' exposure to other students who have different backgrounds in them is very positive. It increases critical thinking and cognitive skills and all those other things, right? So for the naysayers, this is what you can tell them, like, we know. Um, employers are looking for students who are capable of navigating through people with different cultures and backgrounds because that's critical to them and their bottom line. So those things are important, um, to what happens. But what you articulate is how we get beyond the challenge of a polarized society. Living in a place where if we're in one society or one segment of society, we see things one way. And if we're in another, we see things another way. I have always been very troubled by the nature of this whole like black, white, not racial, but that there's no gray, right? We don't have, we don't create a lot of space in our society for people to think, well, maybe it could be this and that. Or I think this way about these things, but I think that way about these things. Like, we don't position ourselves that way. We are extremely polarized and getting more and more polarized. So just a couple of examples. Um, in a survey that was done, and this is a book that I would recommend. She has just this summer come out with two books, um, subsequent to these. Inclusive Conversations, which I have not yet read, it is on my stack. And, um, most recently, Black Trauma, I think. Um, but I would recommend this one, Mary Frances Rogers. It's a super easy quick read and really talks about the elephant in the room. Those things that are very difficult for us to talk in the workplace and giving you some tools around how to make it happen. But one other thing, she did a, she did a survey and some, some really interesting things came out of it. Um, she did a survey where she asked employees at a company whether or not they thought that their organization understood the experiences of blacks in the workplace, right? And overwhelmingly, I think, six out of ten white employees said that they did think that their companies were responsive to the needs of, um, or experiences of blacks in the workplace. On the flip side, six in ten black employees said they did not think that their company was responsive to the needs of black employees. So we are, we're in the same place, but we're not seeing things from the same vantage point. And this one actually makes me chuckle. This is outside of race, but just another example. Um, a poll that was done showed that fifty-six percent of Americans feel that Muslim values are not in alignment with US values. However, sixty-eight percent of those people said that they never, or seldom, talked to a Muslim. So how the heck do you know what other folks' values mean if you've never actually intentionally spent any time or done any, right? So, but these, this is why when I say the thing about I statements, we get caught up sometimes in like thinking, well, they or we, right? But we really don't know. And the challenge is that there's a lot out there that we don't know. Very small percentage of what we actually know, in that green. And then the purple, what you know that you don't know. I always say, I don't know how to change the oil in my car. I will forever be going to a dealer to get my oil changed because I don't know how to do that. I know that. But then there's all the stuff that we don't even know that we don't know. And yet we teach, we live, we answer and respond, and we operate in this zone that we know all- And yet we teach, we live, we answer and respond, and we operate in this zone that we know all of this stuff. When in reality, there's so much more out there that we don't even know. And I think that's what this moment in our society has really brought to bear. That for many of us, we had no idea what was happening in places that we don't necessarily operate in, right?
It's a great spot.
Yeah. So let's think about this moment that we're in. I don't know if any of you have seen the movie Inside Out. I happen to love that movie, Disney Fix Our Movie. But the notion, one of the biggest takeaways to me from that movie is that you don't really know one emotion until you know the other, right? And that's sort of, again, the message here, right? We don't really know what's happening in this country because we may know one perspective, but we don't know the other, right? Um, when you're on a debate team, they teach you that you should understand what the opposing perspective is because that's the only way that you'll truly be able to debate, right? But we don't follow that in the context of our society. So what was really interesting in the movie is that, you know, without joy, sadness was like, I don't really know to be sad because there's no joy. But I knew what joy was like, so I knew how sadness felt. You don't necessarily know anger until you felt joy, right? All of these feelings are the same things that people in this country felt when we watched the video of George Floyd. What we've subsequently seen, whether it be protests that we've seen or additional individuals that have been killed or a lack of information that we've seen, or even I heard some of you all talking about, um, political signs. Um, I, I think I'm still a little Pollyanna-ish and I don't want to believe it, but it's so sad that I don't remember in the eighties when there were two candidates. First of all, I don't remember signs to begin with. So that's probably the first thing. We should probably abolish all signs.
I hear, hear.
Um, but just the simple fact of like, okay, so that's who you support. That's your yard. That's your business.
Yeah.
But literally, we see, you know, in towns, depending upon the bed of the town, you know, signs defaced, signs torn down, signs. You know, and I'm like, why, why? Why do we do that, right? Why can we not seem to coexist in a space that allows people to, to have at least some appreciation for the fact that it's okay for you to have a different opinion, right? How do we find space to come together to have dialogue? Well, this is like a two minute little snippet that I like to show you about how to have those difficult conversations when we're sort of on two polar opposites. Let me just start here.
Is the video volume low?
Oops. Left, bottom left. Bottom left goes back.
The first time I tried to touch the screen.
But you separate it back.
And Barry, I feel like I'm not even paying attention to you. Aw, you good over there?
No, he's.
Yeah, he's still there. He's, he can talk, but he's muted.
Oh, okay.
You hit, yeah, you hit something.
Yeah, I had it go, but it was a hundred. I think that was as far as it, you know, let me see.
Does the TV have a volume?
Grace, you know, it's a.
Grace, it's like, we don't have pro lives at the high school.
There you go, there you go, that's right.
When I got here, it was like, don't tell them.
I haven't messed with the volume, it's usually.
Is there a remote?
No, no.
Let me see if I can do it.
I'm all remote.
If you do it, you have to stream it, just stream it, that would work.
Oh, my God, here I go again. Oh, my God. What I want to do is to just steal this.
Minimize it and go to it on, there you go.
There we go.
There you go. Because the other one, the sound was okay.
It was okay, it wasn't.
It wasn't gross and gray.
Great, but.
Yeah. It's down in the corner, we can turn it up now.
Oh, there you go, there's your volume.
Yeah.
Maybe this will be a little louder, let's see. Oh, my Lord.
Same thing, just, no, it's just low. I think it's just the video.
Second try to mine.
Barry's the only one who can hear it. Barry, what do you think?
Great. Might be louder around here.
Oh, yeah.
It might be. You want to just turn the volume down and I can try, try it one more time and see. I can crank mine up.
Yeah, I can, um, just use.
But you got feedback.
Well, it's, as soon as she turns her volume off, I'll turn mine up.
Yeah.
There you go, there you go, I'm just.
Yeah, I thought I could just X through it.
You're all way too loud.
Yeah, I thought I could X through it and just totally mute it, but, okay.
Your, your, your mic is on.
This mic?
Can you mute yourself? I, I muted, it's her mic that's on because I'm playing it, but. There you go, just mute yourself right there, yeah. We could all. We could share the link.
Uh, yeah, I can do that.
If you wanted, and we could all watch it at another. Right, I can push the link out to everybody. I think it's actually right, it's right here on your slide too.
It is, yes, it's in the slide. So I, and I can tell you a little bit about basically.
Tell us what we need to know.
Yeah, basically what he's talking about, I just like you to show it, is the whole notion of when we are engaged in a conversation with someone, we want to, if we disagree, we want to push back. And so when that person pushes back, we push further, right? And so we're not going. Um, and so ultimately, what his suggestion is, is that he simply asks permission. Let me show you from my vantage point what I see, right? That's the opportunity for us as we begin to have conversations, you know? Can I show you what I see? As opposed to, you know, us fighting back and forth and pushing, but we're not going anywhere. So that's essentially what he says in the video, in the little two minute clip that I like to share. So, see you later, Dr. Kaufman.
Since Dr. Kaufman.
Yeah, when we get the slide, that the link is right on the bottom of that slide.
So I'm gonna move, I'm gonna move a little quickly because I'm looking at the time and I know that, you know, we talked about having a little bit more time, but I don't want us to be here forever. And I do want us to, and we were going to do breakouts, but I think this group is small enough that we might be able to have conversation all together. So I'm just gonna move through this really quickly. A lot of this stuff is, is pretty, you know, um, pretty standard. You know, why wouldn't you have, or what are the costs of not having difficult conversations? The elephant's still in the room. Silence translates to you don't care. Um, you know, sometimes it's resentment. And, and really the biggest one that I think I like to focus on is challenging relationships. So we will, um, decide not to engage with someone or will choose not to interact with someone, which could prevent, um, outcomes for someone else, just because we're unwilling to have a conversation, right? What are the benefits of having difficult conversations? Enhanced trust, right? Sometimes when we push through those really uncomfortable situations, you get to the other end and you're like, wow, you know, I never really saw him or her, that person in that light. And it allows you to sort of engage in a different way. Collaboration, certainly across groups, right? As I tell people all the time, we don't have to agree on the same thing. But the fact that you understand and you've heard my perspective does make me walk away feeling good, feeling understood. Um, we know that if people are included, they feel more engaged and they'll then put forth more discretionary effort. And the biggest piece today is around stress, right? We hold on to a lot of things that create, you probably have heard, and this is, um, Mary Frances Winter's book now. This talks about Black fatigue, you know, this notion of I joke all the time, I have PTSD from dealing, from dealing with racism. Like, there's just things that I haven't talked about or that I've seen or whatever. You're just kind of like, oh, yeah, that's just how things are. Or even I acknowledge it myself, there are certain parts of this state that I drive to and I'm like, what is that gonna be like, right? What are the people gonna be like? What are the signs gonna be like? I hate the signs, you know? What are the signs gonna be like? How am I gonna feel? Like, will I feel triggered as I'm coming?
You drove in here, drove to this.
You know, it's interesting. I saw one sign on my way in, a big one, on the main, like, I think on eighty-two or something like that. But in here, the, the Google Maps took me through the industrial park.
Okay.
So I really didn't see anything. I saw the back of whatever the first school is, or maybe it is the other side of this.
The middle school.
I came down this road, so I really didn't see anything. Um, so that was interesting. So I didn't get a, you know, the benefit of coming through town here. But, you know, there are some places that I've been that I'm feeling like, let me get out of here before dark, kind of thing, right? Um, and there've been times where in my professional career, where I've forgotten almost who I am. Uh, a colleague and I went to another college wedding upstate New York. And, you know, we're both really big foodies, so we went and looked on Yelp. And it's funny because on the way down here, I was like, oh, I need to Yelp and see if there's anything, anything like seafood in particular I haven't had, I should look for shoreline, whatever. So that's the first thing we think. And we picked out this great place, it was known for brunch, it had like five stars or whatever the case may be. And so we get off the highway, this is the New York thruway, you know, very busy interstate or what have you. And we were somewhere in central New York, outside of Binghamton. And we get off the highway and there's all these twists and turns and we end up in this little town that has like one traffic light. So we're still like, oh, well, you know, whatever to me and another African American woman. Oh, this place, oh my God, look what they have. I'm in the navigation, she's driving, so, oh, this will be really great, they have to say that. And we pull up to the place and there are like six or seven motorcycles in the front. And we looked at each other and we were like, probably not the place for two black women in the middle of central New York. Like, you're jogged back into those moments where for a minute you forget that, like, you know, I feel like, when you talk about privilege, I mean, I talk to people all the time, everybody struggles with this whole notion of white privilege. I enjoy light skin privilege, right? Because the reality is that more than likely, my colleague who's darker complected than I, people might be a little bit more like, ooh, lyria. But I enjoy light skin privilege. When I tell you where I went to school, people automatically feel like, oh, there's a whole different reality. So we all experience privilege in some way. Some of us have privilege because of our race. That's just the way it is, right? But I had to realize in that moment, and sometimes I have to, like, Joelle, you cannot just drive freely through anywhere and look up anything and think that it's okay for you to go. And that's hard, right? When you're like, oh, no, this is America, this is my country. My family's been here for nine generations, longer than a lot of others, right? They probably didn't necessarily want to come here. But nonetheless, right, we're here. So it shakes you in a different way when you have to think about where you can access and where you can't, right? And so that, that privilege, um, or, you know, sort of the realization that you no longer, that you relinquish it in certain places is interesting and different. So I didn't get to see this town, so I don't have a perspective yet. Um, you all have been very gracious and no one has been, you know, I, there hasn't been, you know, sort of the same polarization and stuff, but I'm sure it exists. I mean, it is, we're, you know, we're humans and that's what the reality is. Um, I'm going backwards instead of forwards.
We needed a video.
Um, so the self readiness starts with you. Back to your original question, how do we then make a difference, right? Do we need the support of the town? Well, quite frankly, I have to say to you that when I saw East Line, now, this is the first thing I did think. I said, you referred by Jessica? Hmm, they must have some issues down there, right? Because who goes to the attorney to find out who they should talk to about racism? So you just, you know, so you just think about, you know, those are some of the things that you think about initially, right? But I know Jess and I know, you know, she probably, I've been doing some stuff with them. She probably was like, oh, my God, you need to call Joelle because you know.
That's exactly what she said.
So, you know, so I didn't, I thought about that for a hot minute and then I was like, well, let me do a quick Google search. I was like, okay, no drama, great. But I think, you know, there's some things, right? You think about that, right? But I think the fact that you, as, as you all articulate, like a ninety, you know, eight percent white, suburban body town, et cetera, that you said, we want to have this conversation, is important, right? That you might go to your town and say, listen, um, we should probably have this, you know, maybe our town council should have this conversation, right? We should think about how we can curate an opportunity for people to get some information and allow them to be educated. I tried to come to this work very much from my own lived experience. Not from a political perspective, I'm not telling you who to vote for, I'm not telling you what to think. I'm telling you what my reality is and I'm hopefully sharing some facts and giving you all something to think about. I don't expect you to be able to change the world in East Line tonight or tomorrow, but it plants seeds that allow you to then have these conversations further. And so that's really, in answering your question, that's what this is about.
May I ask one other question?
Sure. No.
Yes, the hard thing for me, and the reason I say skeptical, is I went to a high school where I would say it was half and half. And we, I was in high school period, we had a lot of trouble in school, we had to be sitting in halls for four years. So to me, when I look at East Line, my biggest fear for my daughter, she had no exposure to anything. So how, you can put it in a book, but unless you live it. I mean, unless you had your hair pulled and dragged into a bathroom or, you know, just something, whatever was going on in the seventies, how can you really understand it unless you lived it? That's what bothers me more than anything is how are you gonna make students understand it until they live it? And maybe that's just my prejudice.
I got the answer though.
Go for it.
I got the answer.
What is it?
And it's because if, if you start to interject in the curriculum and exposures, that will dissipate. Coming from someone that lived it. So I lived it, I have a multiracial family. And moving here, having children first, uh, that conversation. Are we gonna hear our kids go through the East Line school district? Or are we going to go out of the district? Because that's where mommy goes. Because I grew up in a very diverse area, I'm one of my children to have diverse opportunities. And in the end, we chose East Line education. And I felt myself saying, we can, I can do those things, I expose nature, I seek out those opportunities. But where do I end up when I'm seeking those opportunities? I find myself away from my town and away from my school district, right? And, love my town, I love the district, that's why I'm here. What I'm trying to say is that we start making those changes. When my father came into this building, my daughter invited him to, uh, the special tea, a, a tea thing. And it was just for him and he was so excited to come, but he is a Vietnam vet and he, I've interaged with years, he's here very long. So he doesn't venture out as much as he used to. So I asked, do you mind if I'm in the building? I'll be coping and doing other things, but just so that he can navigate. And here he comes shining because he was her, you know, her special person. And he was the only black man in, in this building. And as we walked in, another, another child said to my daughter, her pop is what? And Alexandra just said, yep, and started. She ran right up to him and gave him the biggest hug and made him feel like the best person in the world. And on the way home, well, of course, the, the parents, I didn't know, I didn't know. It was the first time that I actually felt almost indifferent in my own time. Like, I hadn't felt that in a long, long time. Because I had never been around people that thought of us and our model as different. And I remember crying on the phone and wanting to make a change with that. How do I make that change? I always felt like because the choices that I make with my children.
I always felt like, because the choices that I make with my children, and the education, and the things that I expose them to, so that they'll be good, uh, welcoming people, right, as adults. Not everything is.
Right.
Right, and not everything does.
And no fault of their own, because remember, you know, we're all coming from experiences that we have.
Right, my exposure. So, we think, because each that, it's a lot of exposure. I, I, I'm just saying, that's my opinion, I don't, I'm skeptical because I don't.
Well, I don't think, I don't think it's teaching, it's exposing.
So, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, if there was a way that you could bring students that have recently graduated, that are black, that have recently graduated from local communities, and have them come in and participate maybe as part of the curriculum of the college that they're associated with, or something, and have them be part of teachings, parts or components of the curriculum. And they could then tell about their experiences. I, you know, one of the things I've had an opportunity to be exposed to is to learn, um, several magnet schools, and seeing, and hearing the stories of some of the kids that have literally, I mean, you know, just been phenomenal. Um, but hearing what the, the situations that they had to overcome, or their parents, and usually it's the mother has to overcome, in order to create the opportunity space for the child, is just phenomenal. You hear one of those stories, and you don't forget it.
Right.
It's just amazing, you know? So, if you could bring stuff like that into the curriculum.
And that's a great example, and I'm gonna be quiet, and that was a great example, because we have, well, for so many years, it was for decades, actually, we had a learn program here at the community. So, even though the kids in this building and other kids that were in different buildings didn't have that exposure, there was this inclusive feeling throughout this building, where I believe absolutely that peer, mentor, children got a tremendous amount out of those experiences, just like the children that were participating in the learn program, because they were integrated. So, they have an, I think, empathy, and a welcoming for children that may not be like them, but they, they, they are. I don't know how to exactly word it, but it is because of that exposure, it then it all. So, I just feel like, one of the biggest things that I've asked myself, and, you know, what have I gotten from listening to local stories that have been brought to my attention? What can we do here to limit that? And that's by living it and modeling and exposing children at a very young age. What that child said to my daughter wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't intentional. It was because the child was surprised that she knew I was a black father, or a white father. Um, so it wasn't, but that lack of exposure at a young age, think about that. As children grow, they come into a different age group, and then what happens? Whatever's different, they target. And that's where you get a whole other, uh, a whole other challenge here. And I just feel like, you can do those things here with exposures, and policy changes, and modeling things differently, and nobody hopefully overnight, but I do believe those changes.
One, one big elephant in the room that I, so I moved around sixteen, junior year, starting sometime, I went through Rockford, and it was like, a little different. It was in a lot of different ways. We lived like ten minutes away from London, and there's never been a conversation about, like, the strategic partnerships that East Line and London can have. I always felt like, when I was fifteen, it was like, stay away from London, no, we don't want to go there anymore. And we went right through the street, we go number one, and you're right in the room. And I think that there's a way for us to partner with New London public schools to incorporate some type of, as, you know, Jones, like, what are these opportunities? Well, there's opportunity right down the street from us, where I don't think we've ever envisioned. I mean, and I remember I was fifteen, and it was like, everybody was like, eh, like, do we, and it was, it was just an elephant, I don't think that would be discussed. But at the same time, to have a strategic partnership would only be better for our heritage on most of us.
And if, if that really gets to the whole notion of bias, right? So, what are the things that we've been taught? And I always say, you know, in a well-meaning way, our families want to keep us safe, right? So, the information that they have suggests that that might not be safe. These are the things that, you know, when someone says, oh, you know, make sure you're home before eight, or you shouldn't be in that town at this time, or I don't want you to go by yourself, right? Those are all things that our family members, our friends told us, based upon, maybe the limited, right, in terms of all the things that we know. Probably something that we don't even know that we don't know, right? Um, I hear stories all the time, and people say, you know, like, well, my grandmother always told me not to go X, Y, Z place, but I don't know how she knew, because she said she'd never been there, it's just like that. Like, oh, no, their values are not the same as ours, no, no, no. Have you ever talked, no, don't know anybody that, you know, I mean, it's that same thing. But I think, under the guise of trying to keep us safe, that's how we learn some of the things that we now have to unlearn, that permeate the exposure and the thoughts that we have that actually implicate the decisions that we make, you know? So, let me just jump ahead real quick, because like I said, I do want to be mindful of time. Um, and so, one of the things, and of course, since I never know how to get back to the thing, I went too fast, telling stories. You've probably already figured out that I like to tell stories. And I think that telling stories is a really important way for us to get to know one another. So, in the context of what we would have done if we were gonna break out, but I think this conversation has been really rich, and so I'm grateful for where we are, is to think about how you felt when you saw certain things, right? Not the facts, but how you felt when you heard about things, when you heard about George Floyd's murder, when you saw the protesters, when you hear the phrase, Black Lives Matter, when you hear the phrase, All Lives Matter. How does it make you feel when you think about those things? We're not, these are rhetorical, we're not gonna, I just want you to be thinking about that. Um, and then this was where we were gonna break out, some of the things that we've even begun to talk about, right? At what age were you when you first had a teacher of color? Right? Um, when you enter a room, do you notice who's there? Do you notice what they look like? I'll tell you a funny story. When I was at Travelers, I'll never forget, I spoke to the operating committee, which is like the top forty folks in the company. And after I spoke, one of the leaders came to me and said, oh, my God, it must have been so crazy, like, you know, that you're the only black person in the room. And I was like, you know, I really wasn't even paying attention to it. Because I'm so often in spaces where I am the only person of a particular, whether it's woman, African-American, or have you, that I wasn't even thinking about it, because I'm used to what happens there. But the fact that they noticed it, right, immediately, it changed the tenor of their room, like, this is an all-white room. Look, she's here, we see it, right? Um, so what is that like? Um, and as you think about that, and I think you all have already articulated that, particularly with teachers, what might that experience be like for a teacher of college, for someone in this community who is not as the Sesame Street, and who is not like the others? You know, remember that, one of these things is not like the other, right? What is that experience like for students in this district? So, as you begin, or, or parents, or teachers, so as you begin to think about what you all can do, what your next steps are, you know, based on what we've talked about today, what can you do individually? What step can you take, beginning tonight, when you walk out of here, that will allow you to do something different? What exactly would you do? You don't have to answer now, because you have a thought, you know, you can certainly share. And then, I think more broadly, what collectively we've begun to have this conversation, what collectively can you as a leadership team do to begin to create change, at least in how this conversation is had, or in, in terms of creating an environment that is open to the perspectives and experiences of a variety of individuals? That, my friends, is a challenge to you. Um, I think that in, in the, the context of the fact that you were willing to have this conversation, you already know that it's important. So, how do you, even if it's hard, even if it's uncomfortable, how do you push yourself through to think about some of those questions, right? Those are things that folks who look like me think about all the time. You know, is anybody in the room gonna look like me? Um, you know, that I pay attention to those things. I've thought more about when I first had my first teacher of color in the last year than I ever really thought about it. But when I realized that my first teacher of color was at the middle school level, but was my shop teacher. Not a major academic subject, no disrespect intended to Mr. Fleming, because he did teach me how to use a bandsaw, which I have never used once since that day. But that was the first African-American male person, and a teacher I had was in seventh grade. Um, some people have never, right? There might be some of you who've never had a person of color as a teacher, right? So, I consider myself fortunate that I can articulate seventh grade, and although it wasn't a major academic subject, there are some folks who've never experienced that. And is that something that, as you think about the students that you're developing to go out into the world in this district, is that something that you want them to walk away and say, my entire time, I've never interacted with somebody who looked differently than I, who had a different experience than I? Those are the things that you can begin to do differently, right? Whether it's to your point, bringing in artists, or scientists, or faculty, researchers, who have a particular skill set that they can add value right into the curriculum, right? That's not to be lackadaisical, we don't have to sing and dance. You can bring in someone who is a researcher in a particular area, right? Do people know who Henrietta Lacks is, just an example? Um, in terms of the DNA that was utilized from her, that has changed the course of biology in this country. But most people don't even know who Henrietta Lacks is, nor that she was a poor black woman from Baltimore, right? So, there are clearly opportunities for you all as a district.
And Jo, just with our access to resources, if vetted appropriately, there is so much out there that is appropriate, that that's truthful on the internet, that, you know, teachers can and should be using, you know, with kids, as part of their lessons, not just the standard thing they've always gone to.
Right, and how do you make sure that they, right, who also may not have ever been exposed to this on their own? So, how do you provide for them concrete, um, correct, you know, accurate resources that they can manage as well?
Well, I just, I mean, you know, thinking about this, I think we have so much available right here in our community. Retired ministers, and engineers, and educators, um, doctors, you know, people who are people of color, who I think would welcome the opportunity to come and do some kind of program with us, with the faculty, with the students, and helping to bridge us. And I think, I think we would be open to that, so I guess that's probably our next step, is what I'm guessing. I don't know, we haven't really articulated or outlined it, but I think just beginning the dialogue, because I'm still talking to people who say I'm not racist, and I don't have my privilege. And those difficult conversations, I think, are still difficult, because I'm not good at, like, at going back and forth, and I'm like, if that's how you feel, you know, I'm not gonna be the one to help you get past that, because that's not my skill set. I mean, we can have some conversation, and I can try to open the door, but if they're that defensive, my opinion is just like, I don't think I'm gonna have success in bridging that, getting over that hurdle, like, Candace might do a better job with that, or anybody else might do a better job with that, that's not.
Well, and, and we may not, you know, I, like, I don't come into these conversations like I'm gonna convert everyone to believe what I believe, right? We may not be able to change hearts and minds, but at minimum, we've taken the step to ensure that the conversation happens, right? Um, and I, and honestly, I believe that, you know, you might hear something today, or you may have a conversation with someone today, that maybe five years from now, it becomes manifest in them, and they're like, you know, I really hadn't thought about it in that way. Um, and that's the thing that gives me hope, in spite of all of the things every day that suggest to me, like, you know what, it's not even worth it, why am I bothering, right? Um, that's the thing that gives me hope, is that there's one person at a time who will hear something on a particular day that they'll, you know, transfer to their kid, or have a conversation with a friend, and it'll begin to help, you know, sort of bridge that.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think, like Candace, I think, was starting to hit on this, is it almost seems to me that, to really make true change, you really need to introduce the interface or the engagement with children at a very young age. Because once they get past a certain age in middle school, in early high school, their values and norms are locked in, and they're based on all the things they've been, they've been exposed to. Um, I think it's a harder battle than to, to, to convert or to adjust things. But if you were to do, try to get something more in, at the elementary stage, and then, and then obviously continue it through, through, I would think that would have a large, a very large impact.
I appreciate, and that's unfortunate that that video didn't play, because I, in addition to this role, I'm, I'm a classroom teacher at a high school in town. It's similar to this in terms of diversity. And, um, and I, I want to go beyond the, that language is inappropriate, or, I, you know, we don't, I don't want to just stop the conversation. I want to allow students, I want to be able to facilitate a conversation on this. And I don't feel like I have tools for that, because of course, I've got my own emotional bias, and I'm, I'm like, you know, how could somebody think this way? You know, I'm just ready to lose it. So, I need the tools to be able to, to say, okay, we've got two students in here, you know, I've got an African-American student in my class, and I've got a student over here with the Blue Lives Matter, you know, mask on. And, um, not to say that I need to start a conversation, but to me, you know, there's some tension in the room, perhaps, right? And how do I go about, you know, giving students a, an opportunity? Because I'm not even sure that that student with the Blue Lives Matter mask on really realizes what this person may be experiencing.
And asking questions is exactly sort of, you know, where you begin, right? Because that's what I say, so, you know, tell me, why is that a question? You know, but force them to articulate, why? You know, um, that sort of, the notion of courageous conversation is being willing to, and it was one of our, so feel free to use the, the, um, the guidelines for conversation, but it's around, you know, engaging with curiosity, you know? Asking questions, creating an environment where it's safe to ask questions. And where folks have to really think about what their answer is, it's not just enough to, you know, to throw a, you know, response, but no, tell me why. So, okay, so why might that, why, why might that not be true? You know, let's hear from people, right? So, usually, when we have time to talk about the, the prompt around, um, how you feel when you hear people say All Lives Matter, people tend to sort of respond, like, what does that mean to them? So, now you've heard what it means to ten people, and you realize, like, wow, it doesn't mean the same thing to everybody. So, now you're thinking like, okay, but I thought it was only this, but now this person articulated this, this, and this. So, now I've gotta think more about that, now I have more probing questions I want to ask, right? That's one way to help, you know, get into, but absolutely, that video, um, there's some other tools on that side as well. And then, most of, you know, I try to, like, facilitate and share at the same time, so some of the tools, and I'll share the, um, the presentation. Some of the tools are things that you absolutely can utilize, you know, use those guidelines, use some of those prompts in your class. Um, use that video around race as a social construct, to the extent that it makes sense, how you navigate through, you know, giving students and faculty staff different things to think about, and then encourage curiosity.
I, I understand where things are coming from, and I agree that younger level kids are, are just innocent and more, you know, um, it's, it's a great place to start, but we're, we're living in, you know, a world where most of the population isn't eight years or six years old. And how do we get the population that isn't communicating, right? And that's, that's, I think we gotta do both, you know, I think.
Yeah, 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 I'm, I'm the one who goes, no, skeptical, whatever, I, I, it's very difficult to change people that are, that, that round the world.
You know what, I mean, that's why, honestly.
It's not possible, it's difficult, but it's, but it's very, but younger, it's very, it's, that's the right time, but early development.
I don't think it stops. They do. No, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
It's kind of aggravating at age three, like, that's why.
But they don't have any judgment behind it. They don't, but they start, they start very, you know, condescending around age five. So they, they notice differences around age three.
No, it's media, it's.
Oh, yeah.
It's like the smog that we're all breathing in.
No, literally.
It's true.
No, I just want to, I want to take folks back to their parents.
Well, it does, but I mean, even everyone in this, where we all have biases too. And so I think one of the things I'm wondering is, we're not a very racially diverse board. And so we're, we're, I think, taking really great steps in wanting to make sure that we're moving our district to become more anti-racist. We're also missing some, like, very important perspectives at like the leadership level. But then I also couple that, well, we don't necessarily want to put the burden of figuring this out on our colleagues of color. I don't have an answer, but I, it's a tension that I.
Absolutely. Well, good point.
But I just speak to what Bill was saying, because at the older level, I think that you're seeing perspectives, you kind of have a cap of conversations. What are your thoughts, Joel, on how to, to harness that? Is that, I automatically think, and I always feel like peers learn best from peers or around their game. And I've said that quite a few times because when we want to bring someone in, whether or not it's for suicide prevention or what have you, sometimes it's like a lecture and it goes right out, right? But kids in within ourselves, right? We identify with someone that's either had that experience and they have a related feeling. So is that something that you think would be conducive?
I have to, I have to believe so. Because, you know, and honestly, the work that I've been doing with workplaces is really predicated upon that, right? There's, there is not a point to, to the point made earlier, that once we leave high school, you can forget it. Because in college, you can, you can decide where you want to be, who you want to be with, what major you're in, even if you're in a school that is diverse. And it, it cracks me up about UHAN, you know, how everyone's like, oh, that's the most diverse class. Well, yeah, obviously, the student population is more diverse. So obviously, you're going to recruit a diverse class every year. Like, that's not rocket science. Congratulations, bud. You know what I mean? And then the reality is that the students are also isolated on campus. When you bring a whole gaggle of students from East Line to UHAN, they still hang out with the students from East Line. They're not necessarily going to branch out like, oh, let me meet people from, and the majors that they choose are also very, very isolated. So if you, you know, you're in a particular school or college, you're only with those people from that school or college. You don't really get, it's a big university. You don't have an opportunity to do all of that unless you're intentional. So by the time people get to the age of twenty-one, they're in the workplace, you don't really have any tangible educational opportunities unless you take them upon yourself. And that's why, you know, I think workplaces, I think, now are really responsible for helping to engage these dialogues because otherwise, where are adults going to find places to have them? We spend more time at work than anywhere else. Even in the reality of COVID, we are on Zoom with our colleagues, those of us who are not in person, more time than we spend with our family. So where do we have these conversations? I have to believe that there's still value in, you know, us forty-somethings and fifty-somethings, still having thirty-somethings, still having these conversations. You know what I mean? I have to believe that. Otherwise, you know, we hang it up. So, so I, again, I just want to make sure, you know, I'm going to do a time check because it's a little after seven, and I am at my wrap-up point. But this has been such a robust conversation, and I'm really glad that we didn't break out because I think that there was benefit to everyone hearing from, and all of you participated. So I think that was really important.
Joel, can I just ask, if Barry had anything that you wanted, Barry, anything that you wanted to share to?
All the time, I'm the worst facilitator.
No, no.
No, 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 we were just talking.
No, Joel, it's been very interesting.
Hold on, Barry, we can't, we can't hear you, Barry. Just one second. I can unmute you.
I think I'm unmuted.
Did we turn down the volume?
Oh, that's right.
No, you turned down the volume on the TV. On the TV, TV, you turned down the volume. I don't know how to do that. I don't know how to do that.
Hold on one second, Barry.
Hold on, Barry. I'm going to stop sharing.
Because we can't hear you.
Oh, is it that in the left, right-hand corner? Oh, there you go.
There you go.
Our teachers are having some.
Yep, today, the tech person at our school, they bought all new wireless mics for all the teachers so that they could Zoom while they're walking around the room. Great, okay, great, super. He comes to my room, my computer doesn't have a plug-in for their wireless mic, so it doesn't work because I'm teaching with that kind of computer. So it's nonstop.
Where's Barry?
You're just constantly trying to, okay, I've got the kids at home. Wait a minute, nope, you're on the wrong screen. And it's, you know, it does cut into the time for the kids that are there, but you're trying to be inclusive. Go ahead, Barry.
No, I'm, I'm fine. I've been listening intently to the conversation with you all. Everything you've had is very engaging. I was able to copy the links from your videos and show them on my own screen. So I'm right in with all this, and, and thank you for everything you've done tonight.
Thank you.
What do you say there, Joel? We couldn't hear you.
He said he was able to hear the links and having a great conversation.
Thanks, Barry.
So I probably have just a slide that I'd like to leave you with. I did that, and I'm going to get out of it when we figure it out. I'm just going to jump right here, maybe, and figure out what I pressed over here to put it in this format.
Be dangerous and hit the slide.
Oh, I know, I should have touched the screen. But I did it. So this is, that was a resource that I will, you'll have because you'll see it in the presentation. But this is a, this, this image was actually created around COVID initially. Some of you on Instagram may have seen it. And you can't see it now because I have my mic on. But it's, it's really sort of how we move and how we learn and how we grow at the, at the core. Moving from our fear zone, like, I don't want to talk about this, I'm not really sure, I don't know what to say, to our learning zone, where we begin to really understand and seek more information, and then how we grow, right? That at the core is what you want to model to your colleagues and certainly to your students as we navigate this conversation. And so this is probably, there's, you know, this book by Ibram Kendi has been referred to like everybody in the universe. And I think, I haven't read it yet, but I think it's a great tool, How to Become an Anti-Racist. My caveat is this, everybody's not going to be able to read How to Become an Anti-Racist. Everybody's not ready for that, right? Everybody's not there. So there are tons of resources out there. You literally can Google anti-racism resources or diversity, equity, and inclusion resources, and there'll be books beyond books beyond those. This, that book in particular is relatively scholarly. Like, you kind of got to be into it to really, you know, be there. So I don't always recommend that the book that's sold out on Amazon, like, I'm not the one to say like, oh, yeah, go get that. Not necessarily. But I do think that one of the things that he says in that book is so critically important, and it's this, the only way to undo racism is to consistently identify it, describe it, and then dismantle it, right? If we don't know what we're talking about, we can't change it. So how do we move courageously into a space where we can talk about it so that we can dismantle it? So I'll leave you all with that. Thank you. I appreciate it. Please feel free to join my network if you're so inclined, if you're on social. I don't tweet. I do have Twitter, but I don't tweet. I'm mostly on Facebook and occasionally on Instagram. Lots more on LinkedIn, where I'll share articles and things like that.
Joel, your last name is Richardson?
Richardson, yes.
Thank you.
Joel, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming on. It's like.
It's nice to be out. You all are my second, no, third in person.
I just think you get more face-to-face than you would in a Zoom.
Yeah. Yeah.
Been having a live workshop, man, for how long?
Right, you know, so I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You were great.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Barry.
Are we having a wrap-up conversation? Or are we just, before we all get up and go? Okay, then I, our motion to adjourn. I just didn't know if we were having a conversation after. I just didn't know if we were having a wrap-up conversation now or at a.